Good morning. Thank you all for being in attendance this morning. My name is Stephen Havy. This is the work session for the Public Safety Committee for March 13th. If you would please, I'd like to have you stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Havy.
Here.
Mr. Seer.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
He's here.
Mr. Demick. Mr. Healy. Mr. Rumfelt. Mr. Stocken.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here.
Four present, three absent.
Thank you. She on the committee? Okay. Again, thanks for being here. This is a work session to discuss the EMS study that was recently done. We're going to go over a number of things. We're not going to go over everything because we don't have that much time. We did pick out a few things to discuss first, and we hope to get the committee up to speed on that, and perhaps the committee can help me be up to speed as well. The first thing on the agenda is the EMS study review and discussion. And I'm assuming that the members of the committee have looked us over. I don't expect you to have read it word for word, but I expect you probably are familiar with it. Let me just start by asking any of the committee that they might have a comment on the EMS study to start with, just to get a conversation rolling. Anything? Okay. Let me get in the middle of this a little bit then. In my opinion, what we're looking for at the end of these work sessions, by the way, there will probably be more than one, we're looking to make EMS in the county sustainable, and we're also looking to improve performance in the county. Now, having said that, we have some of the best response times of the area, and we should be very pleased and very proud of that. However, always room for improvement, and there are things that we can do and things that are important for us to do to improve performance going forward. It's not something that we should become complacent with. I have with us here today Bonnie Van Haasen, and I would ask, do you have any comments on this before we go further on the study?
Hello. I think it was a good study. There's been some discussion on some of the bits and pieces of it, but overall, it really did look at the county, and it did look at our EMS system, and as a whole, they looked at each agency. They went out and talked to each agency. So I think that they really had a very good report when they got done for what we have and where we're lacking and the things that are needed.
I found it to be very detailed. There's a lot of information in there. For anyone who wants to delve into it, there's stuff that I had no idea, and I think it's fairly complete. One of the very first things that needs to happen is we need to talk about a certificate of need, and I was wondering if the county administrator, Mrs. Knapp, would possibly address that.
Thank you. That is something we've talked about for a few months now, is doing the municipal certificate of need. That is also, I believe, a recommendation of the EMS Advisory Board. They did vote last night to make that an official recommendation. So that is something I've been working with our county attorney, Allison Caroan, and we have outside counsel, and she can explain a little bit of how we prepared to do that. But in general, as the laws stand right now, once you have that municipal CON, you have two years to demonstrate that need. So that is why we have not yet filed, because we weren't ready to do anything with it. We don't want that two-year clock to start ticking until we are ready to do that. There is some legislation pending, I believe, at the state level that might get rid of that two-year period, and we'll just keep an eye on that. But for right now, we're just planning to move forward when we have a concrete plan of how to use it.
Excellent. I wonder if you would just review for us the benefits of having a CON, and then, if you would, the steps we need to take in order to have one.
I really, I hate to throw that back to Bonnie, but I feel like Bonnie could explain best what the benefits to us of having that CON are, and then I think Allison could explain best what the steps to achieve it would be.
Excellent. Bonnie, would you like to go?
The CON will let the county, well, it's kind of, there's a few ways we can use it. We can get an ambulance ourself, a fly car, and be a backup to the system when the system is in need of us. Also, we can contract with our volunteers and assist them with responding and help with the mutual aid system. They are all, every single page of that said that that was a need in there from the volunteers. So those are the two things that we are really looking at.
Excellent. Not to put Allison on the spot, but she's already been put on the spot. What do we need to do in order to secure our CON?
So once, so once we are ready to apply for our CON, well, first, the board needs to make a series of decisions and essentially be ready to proceed moving forward with how the county would plan to operate their EMS services, because it'll take, because once you apply for the CON, it'll take approximately three to five business days for it to be approved. And then, currently, we still have that two-year time period, which County Administrator Knapp just explained, pending this possible legislation that is at the state level that we will be watching. So, once we're ready to apply for it, first, this board would have to pass a resolution that would have to state that there is a, that would have to state that there is a need for the EMS services here in Allegheny County. They would have to establish a type of service that we want to provide, which would either just be, whether it would be an ambulance service or an advanced life support service. It would have to state the area to be served, which in this case would be the entirety of Allegheny County, and then the date that the resolution would take effect. There would also have to be a letter from the Chief Executive Officer of the municipality. So in that case, it would be the Chairman of the Board of Legislators requesting that the Public Health Law Operating Authority as a certified ALS or ambulance service. Then we'd also have to complete the application for the EMS operating certificate, which asks a series of questions that we have to answer. And we also have to, excuse me, provide a map that identifies the area of operation that we'd be providing the service. And then if we, if the county does intend on providing advanced life support, we would have to apply to our Regional Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, also known as REMAC, and be approved to provide advanced life support care. And then also, if we intend to have contract with another EMS provider for services, our filing should include copies of those signed contracts or agreements. Now, if, that's not, it's best if we have that lined up. However, if we don't, that's not necessarily a deal breaker when we apply. We just have to let them know that we do intend to do it. But for, so, for example, if we do plan on looking for another EMS provider to provide some of those services, but we're in the process of having an RFP out, we could just let them know that we have an RFP out, and that would also be acceptable. And then after we have all this information put together, then we would send it to the New York State EMS Council for them to look at it. And then once they approve that, they also have to come and do a full service inspection. And once that, and then once that inspection is conducted, then our two years would start running, and we would have to demonstrate that need within our area.
Okay. I would assume the process would start, when the time is right, it would start with the Public Safety Committee. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So, correct. So, and our outside counsel that we have on retainer, who I do keep informed about the status of where we are, he is here to assist us with getting all the paperwork done for the CON, including the resolution. He and I have already been working on all of, both the resolution and the CON, so when we are ready to go, we can go. He will also assist us with drafting any and all of the contracts that we will need, as well as if and when we do need to prepare any RFPs to go out. So legally, we are all ready and all geared up to do whatever needs to be done to get the CON moving when the time is right.
Excellent. Okay. Now, what I was going to do is I was going to stop and have questions. So, Mr. Harris, you have one.
Yeah, I guess the question is, is there any reason why we're not ready now? We have the study in hand.
So, once, so, you do not want to get the CON now if you do, it is recommended that you do not get the CON now, because once you have the CON approved, your two years start running. So, to demonstrate your, that you, to prove that you have that need and you're meeting those needs. So, you are still in a position right now where you do not have, the board has not made those decisions yet about, do you, well, one, you actually need to, in some instances, you would need to have an ambulance or a fly car to start providing those services.
Okay. Let me interrupt you. I'm sorry. So are you saying that we have to make purchases like that prior to applying for the CON?
Yes. It has been recommended that you would need to make those purchases.
What if it's denied?
You have to have the ability to have those things very, very quickly. So I think, and Bonnie, we had a meeting with the State Department of Health on Monday. Do you feel like that might have clarified any of that, that we need to have those things? But...
Yeah, he recommended that you be ready to start, when you get the CON, you be ready to start doing service. The other thing is, is that municons, when you first apply for your muni-con, the time then it would be rejected would be after the two years of, to not be able to show need would be when it would be rejected. Municons are given out real, fairly frequently for them to start, for municipalities to be able to start serving. So, I don't know that that would, that being rejected is even an option.
So, this...
I'm sorry. I think this board is ready, okay? We've, some members of this board thought we'd done it already. Others thought that we were waiting for it to have the study in hand. I personally am not one iota concerned that we won't be able to demonstrate need in two years, whether or not we have an ambulance in our back pocket or not. Are we even able to go out for RFPs for staffing or other EMS contracts without the CON in hand?
I think that you could do the preliminary work and have things ready to go. I think you could do the RFP if you wanted to, but you obviously wouldn't execute the contract unless you knew you were actually going out for the CON. So you could have all the research done, you could know who out there would be available, and then, and then go forward all at once.
Okay. I'm going to address that in just a second, but I wanted to know if there's more questions. I think Deb was first.
Oh, sorry. Jean. I'm going to go back to, so you're saying for us to do this, we need to purchase an ambulance and have trained staff on, and provide those services before we get a CON? And then, and that was a recommendation moving forward, that the county have this?
It doesn't have to be an ambulance. It could be a fly car. Right, Bonnie, do I have that right, depending on what level of service we intend to do?
Right. You can have either an ALS fly car or an ALS or BLS ambulance.
It doesn't have to be a brand-new one. It could be a used one. We could also contract with somebody else's.
And what is a fly car? Just for people who don't know the difference?
A fly car is a car that would have ALS equipment in it to be able to interface with an ambulance.
Very good. Jan. Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on just a second. Gary, you want that repeated?
Yeah.
Could you repeat that?
Okay. A fly car is a vehicle that has ALS, which is Advanced Life Support Equipment, in the car. You go, that fly car will go and meet up with an ambulance that doesn't have the ALS capabilities. They will take, you know, like their life pack or their monitor, any of their ALS equipments in a bag. They get out, they get in the ambulance, the BLS ambulance, and can do ALS treatments while the, on the BLS ambulance.
And Bonnie, if they were out just driving around the county, what would, like a typical fly car that's already in operation by another agency look like to them? Just kind of give them a visual that that's a fly car versus that's an ambulance?
Okay. So, a lot of them around are, we'll say, like, on the order of a Tahoe or that type of vehicle. They have lights they have to have, they have to be inspected by the New York State Department of Health. There's a certain criteria of what they have to carry with them on that ambulance, on that EASV. And depending on what care you're giving, you know, there's a list of them. They come out, they check all of that, make sure everything is in date, make sure nothing gets expired. And then, so what happens is, MTS is a great one, they have three of them. So they have cars that, when they get a call, those cars go and meet up with the ambulances, whether it's their own BLS ambulance, their own basic life support ambulance, or one of the volunteer basic life support ambulances. And then that person will take their stuff, get on their ambulance, they can run 12 leads and send them to the hospital, they can give medications that no one else, like the BLS cannot give. And then what they'll do, they'll ride in with them, and then when they get there, you know, either somebody follows in the car, or they go back and get their car.
Who has three of them?
MTS.
Okay, Jan, you're up.
Well, I think when we first started talking about all this, I don't think any of us wanted to get in the ambulance business, and actually, the county have our own vehicles, so that kind of surprised me. But the other part of it is, where's all this money coming from to pay? If we have to buy an ambulance and a fly car, or one or the other, I think our ARPA monies are probably committed at this point, and we're hearing constantly that we don't have a lot of fund balance left or contingency money. So, I'm just very concerned of how this is, I mean, I know the needs there, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, where, how are we going to pay for all this?
And I think that's a very good question, Jan. We do have fund balance, we do have next year's budget. I mean, we're, I don't know if any of this would be ready for this year, if we're just planning to get going for 2025 forward. We are already spending a significant amount this year with our contract with the MTS as we did last year. This year's money will not come out of ARPA as well, it'll probably come out of fund balance. So I think that's just long-term, good budget practice, that we would sit down and have to work out those details before we take the next step forward.
Okay. Can I follow up on that, Mr. Chairman?
All right. And Deb.
Agree. It's, long terms, it's got to be budgeted, but I think we actually do have ARPA money that could cover some startup costs, because we have the, whatever, around $400,000 that we haven't allocated, and then we have that fare money that we set aside that I think is probably safe to free up at this point, right?
Yeah. If we wanted to go out and buy a vehicle, I feel like we could buy a vehicle. We could probably do some preliminary contracts to get the vehicle up to where it needs to be. Staffing might be in excess of that ARPA, though, so we'd want to take a look at all of that. But yes, we have enough to make some preliminary steps, but we need to know if we have enough to keep this going forward, if we even want to do this application and buy these things.
Can we contract with another ambulance company rather than buying our own?
I think that we can contract with another ambulance company, but if you want to have a CON and you want to have other ambulance companies operating under your CON, you probably still need to have a vehicle of some sort. And whether you own a brand-new vehicle, a used vehicle, or you contract out for a specific vehicle, that's all to be determined.
Deb's first, and then Mr. Harris.
Jean just asked my question, but I want to follow up with that. Buying a vehicle is one thing, but staffing it, it's not just a one person, you're going to have to staff that vehicle 24/7. So you're talking multiple people?
It's a good question.
Bonnie, maybe you have a better idea of what sort of level we'd need for staffing for an ambulance or a fly car? Maybe describe both.
For a fly car, you would need an ALS provider, which would be a critical care or a paramedic person. That would be a one person per shift, whatever shift you decided to run, whether it was an eight, 10, 12-hour shift, whatever. You can decide on the hours of operation if you wanted to only staff, like, staff for the weekends or for the week. When the, when the need is higher, you can staff, you know, start out that way to increase. If you're doing an ambulance, you'd have to have at least a driver, and if it's a BLS ambulance, an EMT, or if it's an ALS ambulance, you'd have to have a driver and an ALS provider. Not 24/7 necessarily, if you don't want to have your hours of operation that many.
Mr. Harris, do you have something? You good?
These people could be employees. They could be staffed through contracts, or we have a contract directly with a staffing agency like E5, or I believe we could look at other contracts as well.
Mr. Seer, and then Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Havy. I just kind of like to echo what the EMS Advisory Board recommended last night. They recommended to put a slight pause on getting the CON. They said they were a few months away from giving a recommendation and a pretty solid plan of their suggestion on some questions that we have. Also, he said there was a long list of other counties that had lost their CON due to not being prepared. So, they said, once you hit the start button, the clock is ticking, and those two years go by very fast. And I guess an example, we've been working on this for a year and a half, and very, very little progress. So I would, my recommendation would be just, just a little bit more prepared before we find out a lot of unknowns while the, while the clock is ticking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy.
Yes, I agree with Adam on that. I'm hearing a lot of probably, or is recommended, not required here. The, and if we can contract with somebody else versus for that fly car, that might be an option we want to do rather than purchasing one ourselves. Going down the level of staffing, from what I've seen in government period, once you go down that road, it just continues to grow and grow and grow. I don't know how I managed as a young man, growing up when times were wild, and we lived without all these services. I think you got to look at what's really a, needed and what's desired. I mean, if we had our wish lists for everything, then we would like a perfect world, and no mistakes, no accidents, no nothing. But that's not reality either. So I think we got to do our due diligence and make sure we get this right.
Thank you. Deb.
Sorry. I have a lot of questions.
It's all right. That's why we're here.
So, Adam, what other recommendations was made last night at that committee, or that group that was together?
I think Bonnie was taking the minutes, and she might be better to recite them.
Okay. Let's start there. Let's hear, I mean, for the rest of us who weren't there, let's hear what the recommendations were from this committee who's been studying this.
The recommendation, they made, they've made a work group out of the committee, and the work group has met only once. They would like to meet a few more times and would like a three-month pause to get a plan together so that when they get the CON, there's a plan in place. They're hoping to have recommend, some recommendations by next meeting to look at and present up. And then they're hoping that, and they said if you wait three months, at least that gives you three months to get, decide how we want to go with it, where do we want to cover, where are the gaps? And then, when you went for the CON, you'd be a lot more prepared to where, to start from.
And Bonnie, they were pretty clear, they are going to recommend that the county get a CON, they just want to make sure everybody has a game plan before we apply for it.
Yes. They said, it was unanimous last night that they wanted a CON. They just want to know what, how to use it and a plan going forth with it.
So, did this study not lay some of that information out as to how we would use a CNN, CON? In the study that was provided to us?
There's several, in that plan, there's several different ways it can be used. They, they gave several, there were several pages of recommendations from it.
Okay. Well, that was a good discussion. Okay, I've wrote, I've written some notes here, but before I tell you what I think, I think we'll move on to some other topics, if that's okay. Recommendations from the study. Some of the things that I just jotted down, and this could be open discussion, you pick one, and we can talk about it. First of all, securing the CON, which we've talked about. Supporting local EMS agencies with enhanced training and recruiting processes, funding some training, mobile training perhaps, Bridge Course, which we've already started to bring ALS people, is ALS up to paramedic, or did I? Okay, critical care up to paramedic, thank you. This is why you're here. Supporting recruitment and retention, any benefits that we could provide for first responders, tax breaks, anything of this nature. Third-party billing, if we were to support the paperwork end of it for the agencies. And there's some new stuff coming out. As you know, the I am Responding program is, that's being rolled out, am I right?
Yes, we're working on that right now.
Okay. And improved inter-agency agreements and mutual aid. So there's, there's a lot of stuff in that ball of wax, and I don't, I don't mean to throw that all out as one thing, but if there's something that I mentioned that strikes a nerve, let's talk about it. Yes, no, too much stuff? Deb.
Okay, so Steve, when you say agencies, are you referring to the volunteer ambulance corps in the various communities?
Actually, I'm referring to MTS and the volunteers, yeah.
And the report said to support them?
It did say to support them.
Financially and/or with paperwork? Is that what I just heard you say?
Well, I, yes. The easy answer is yes. The question would be, how do you do that?
Right.
And that's something that we would have to hammer out in a session similar to this. But yes, to answer your question, there was talk of financial and paperwork, I don't know what to call it, what do I want to call that?
Administrative paperwork.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Again, that's why you're here.
While you're on that subject, could you talk about the...
Mr. Healy.
If we can do that third-party billing, assist them in some of the paperwork task.
Absolutely. Bonnie, would that be a help? Is that something that, maybe I'm misunderstanding third-party billing, help me out.
Okay, so third-party billing would be, we'd hire somebody to do billing. That, the problem with that is, all of, most of your EMS has a third-party billing, the ones that charge. What this would be is, if we did a CON and we contracted with our volunteers, we could actually charge for the calls that they take as Allegheny County and give them back some of that revenue.
Well, that would help, help them too, right? Because then you wouldn't have to...
Right, because they don't, right, because they aren't getting anything back other than whatever's in their budget or, you know, what taxes, fundraising. We just have to, like I say, when we, when we would contract with them, then we would do it, and that would take the, some of the burden off them, because we would be able to be doing that for them.
Right. Thank you. Quite honest... Quite honestly, the whole purpose of this study was to help us help them to help us, if you know what I mean. These agencies, both MTS and the volunteers, are the backbone of who comes to get you when you've fallen down and can't get up. So the whole purpose of this whole study actually is to improve the EMS in the county by supporting the agencies that are out there. I'm sorry, I did throw a bunch of stuff out there at you all in a bunch, and I probably shouldn't have given you that much at once. But again, anything that we've talked about so far raised questions for you, or opinions. Mr. Harris?
I apologize. I'm hung up on the CON.
Do it.
But it's somewhat related to this next conversation piece. So are we saying today that we're waiting three months to receive recommendations from the advisory board before we take next step on the CON? Is that what I heard?
That's what I think we heard.
That was the recommendation from the advisory council, advisory board.
So if that's the case, are there not pieces within the study recommendations that we can be doing now that we know are going to be recommendations from the advisory board, such as rebuilding the mutual aid plan, so preparing all those agreements, preparing contracts that we anticipate will be entering into with municipalities, stuff like that? Can we knock some of those out before we move on and make sure that we're actually doing some work progressing towards that CON application?
I think some of it, yes. So back on the CON, Allison's done a great job doing a lot of homework with outside council even over the past few months, just trying to get things set for when we do want to do the paperwork. We also need to go and say, all right, what kind of vehicle are we looking at? Are we going to own it or contract it? What kind of staffing? We can do homework, continue to do homework in this three-month time period. We're waiting for the advisory board. Put that aside. Look at some of these other things you just mentioned, mutual aid being one of them. And probably the best way to go about the mutual aid conversation is to have our EMS coordinator, Bonnie, and the sheriff, talk about that, and see where we're at on it. And Bonnie, or Sheriff, do you guys have any comments on the mutual aid that we're doing? Because how you dispatch, it's going to be probably key.
The mutual aid and the dispatch policy has to work together.
I agree. And I think we can always make changes. I think it's something we need to take a hard look at, and I do with this areas, that we can make changes that would improve the situation.
So I think first step would be to have them sit down and look at where we're at and see what we can do to move forward that will improve things. And they made great points last night at the EMS Advisory Board, that our response time is pretty good right now. It didn't use to be that great, but it's pretty good right now, and we want to keep it pretty good. So it's kind of a fragile conversation, especially knowing that there's all these other hurdles coming up in the future as far as who we have available to respond and what sort of volunteer agencies we have. So we have to not break what we have right now that's working, but be prepared to flex for future needs.
Do you have something, Adam?
Yeah, I definitely respect Mr. Harris's thoughts on not wanting to sit idle for three months. I think some of the things you had mentioned, mutual aid, and changing some of the policies and how you're toned out with towns and villages, and working with the sheriff and dispatch will easily take a few months. And that would be a great idea to start taking a step in that direction, to be prepared for when we do want to pull the trigger on a CON. Thanks.
Deb?
Just for clarification and on how we're going to move forward with this, whose responsibility are we looking at to do that? The advisory committee, or our administration people and the legislator committee here?
I could be wrong, but I think policies have to be changed with volunteer, fire, and EMS on how they call in, and when they're in service and when they're not, and how many tones go out. I think that would be a combination of Bonnie, the county attorney, and most likely the sheriff, who would make the ultimate call on the dispatch.
Mr. Healy?
Yes, I agree with both Mr. Harris and Mr. Seer, that just because we're waiting three months to move ahead with the CON doesn't mean we have to stand still here. We should be working, it should be a work in progress. It should be a work in progress all the time anyways, because there's so many changes that come down the way. But I think the important thing is to keep moving ahead with this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. What I had jotted down as we were discussing this is that we might give the advisory board, we should give the advisory board their three months to do their due diligence. And no, we shouldn't stand still while they're doing their due diligence. We should be doing ours. We should be ready to go if we choose to do so. And I'd like to have, this may not be the next work session, but I intend to have a work session for public safety in June, and we can discuss that in June, the CON, after the advisory board has come up with their recommendations, and the administrative team has done any homework that they can do ahead of that, which would include such things as Bonnie and the sheriff meeting on the mutual aid, et cetera. We can make some progress on that, I think. So that's what I'm thinking. And correct me if I'm not in the right ballpark.
Well, in that two months or three months also, there's, some of these will be touched because the bridge course starts in April. So our critical care is going up to, will be going up to paramedic. I mean, that's going to be starting. I am responding should be starting in April for the entire county instead of just the ones that have it now. So some of these recommendations, we are working on, I mean, they will be going forward, so we're not standing idle. We are working on it. We still have classes going on. So we are, we are working on some of these recommendations. And as far as the CON, we can work on, you know, every meeting, they'll be coming back with what they think, so it can be discussed as well, because we meet monthly.
Excellent.
How are our collaboration efforts going with BOCs and with Alfred State?
Alfred State, I've run into kind of a roadblock. They are, the person that I was working with left there, and I've been trying to get somebody else to pick the bottle up over there, and I'm having an issue with that. They're not really as, they're not as gung-ho about it. So I am still making, I'm still making contacts with them. If I can find somebody over there that wants to work with me, we would definitely will put a course back over there. BOCs, we're still working with them. I've been trying to get ahold of Amanda, which is the one that is head of it now. They've changed who they had running it, and they've put it over to Amanda. And the last I had talked to her, they were still looking because the problem that they're running into is that these seniors need a science or a math. So they have to make sure that they have a certified science or math teacher that can come in and teach the required amount of time during that class. So we're still shooting for September, the last I heard. I'm looking, I've been trying to get ahold of her to set up a meeting, and she has not returned my calls.
Well, if you need any assistance with that, I would suggest you could contact any of our state representatives' offices, and you might be able to help along with that process.
Excellent. Thank you. Something else? Okay, if it's okay with the committee, I'd like to schedule that work session in June, where we can pick this up, where we've done more legwork and we have more information. So that'll be good. Like I said, that may not be the next one. As a matter of fact, I would like to go back, if we don't have any more discussion about the other stuff that we mentioned, I think I would like to go back and have another work session and cover some of that, some of the support for the EMS agencies, et cetera. Any more discussion about the CON, or anything else that we've discussed so far? Mr. Harris?
Last one, last one.
That's all right. You're allowed.
So we're supporting that state legislation that would make EMS an essential service. So I don't know who back here is best to answer this, but am I correct that once something, if EMS is treated as an essential service like fire, then municipalities will be obligated to provide that service? But if we hold a county CON, are we, will we be under that same obligation? In other words, say friendship goes kaput, and we have a countywide CON, and they don't have any municipally, town-funded operations, will we be obligated to provide that service if EMS is deemed an essential service?
Well, if you look at the legislation that's going through, they're actually saying that they, one of the, in the part V, is that the counties are going to be responsible for the, making sure that EMS is covered, whether you task it out to your towns or villages or whatever, or whether you take it on as yourself. That is in the legislation as of right now. If it becomes an essential service, yes, somebody will have to, and it's not, other than that legislation there, it's not said who's going to have to. For towns, I mean, for fire, it's your town, it's tasked to the town. For the EMS, it's in the essential service part of it, it just says that it will be required. But along with that legislation, there is a thing where, a statement where it says that the counties will be responsible for making sure that they, that there is coverage.
Okay. Jan, did you have something?
I just was curious. We have this EMS study that we paid lots of money to have done. How much of this is being taken into consideration by the advisory board? I mean, they pretty lay out a lot of stuff in that study, and it's like we're reinventing our own study. It's like, are they really looking at the study and the recommendations, or are they ignoring the study and coming up with their own recommendations?
I can say this, the advisory board is the top of the top, the cream of the crop, way more experience and knowledge and know-how than we could ever imagine or begin to have. I think there is a few errors in that study. I wouldn't hold it as the Bible. I could point them out, but I wouldn't want to embarrass anybody. I don't think that is the exact template. And if you got off course a little bit, I think it would be a very good thing.
And I think the study, it's a broad picture, and it's also a snapshot in time. So it's looking at us last summer, early fall, and painting a broad picture of what we'd have to do to address those needs. Circumstances could change, and it could change rapidly, especially with pending legislation. But at the end of the day, I think those recommendations are going to hold true no matter what. And it's a menu option. They didn't say, do this. They said, you need to address this situation, and here are some ways in which you could do it. And I think that probably EMS Advisory Board, and they are looking at those recommendations, will be able to come up with things that fit within those menus.
The other thing is, is that the recommendations, if you look across the state, they're taking some of the things that have happened in other counties. Every county is unique in how it is run, and every, like, a lot of those other counties work with big conglomerates, AMR, Mercy Flight, whatever. We work with a local privately-owned EMS that we work very well with. A lot of those recommendations were, I mean, when they've looked at different places, they've looked at places where they, the locals and the commercials do not work well together, and that's not here. So what they will do, and I said that from the very beginning, is that whatever they gave us, it'll be a little piece of this, a little piece of that, a little piece of that, to make our own system, to make our system work in this county with the people that we have here.
One thing I always keep in the forefront of my mind when I remember, when I have a grand plan and lots of great ideas for this, is we only have so many paramedics in this county, and they're not really growing. Hopefully, we can change that. Thank God, Ms. Ricketts is doing her due diligence to get certified. But we only have so many professional providers, and that's it. So you have to work with that pool, unless you have a great way to maybe attract people into this wonderful county and choose a profession as a paramedic. Thanks.
Some of the stuff that we had mentioned earlier that we're going to cover in future work sessions, do address that. Things that will help to, well, let's face it, being a provider is a burden. Not only do you have to volunteer and go out in the middle of the night when you didn't want to, but you have to have training, which costs money. You have to have books, which costs money. Then you probably have, and I'm not sure, you have to have continuing education.
Correct.
And, you know, the people that are doing this, do this because they know there's a need, and they love their county and their town, and they do it for that reason. And if we can sweeten that up a little bit, it'll make their lives easier, and it may make recruitment easier, and we may be able to increase those numbers. And I hope we can.
One thing that I wanted to say is, we are going to have 13 more paramedics soon. There are 13 people who have signed up that are already...
The critical care, correct.
Critical care people.
The only thing with them is they're already running as our, as our advanced life support as critical care. So they will be going up to paramedic. We aren't going to lose them. If they hadn't have signed up for this bridge course, they would have been put back to AEMTs as of June 30th, 2027. So, I mean, this is a, this is a plus, is that we're keeping these, these 12 or 13 to move forward. So I'm excited about that. We will be offering the paramedic course again in January, and hopefully those will be some new ones. So hopefully, we're getting a few. It's a, it's a long class.
It is.
You can ask Scott. He's been going through it. It's a long, it's a lot of hours, it's a lot of dedication.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is, looking in the report, the EMS leadership development, to me, that's a place where maybe, you know, we can add some assistance there. It seems to me that, you know, we can help people who want to lead, who may not necessarily want to join a volunteer ambulance squad, but who could go into the community and, you know, say, hey, there's a need here. Can you help? So, and it's Bonnie who pushed me to say, oh, there's a place for everybody. And I think that's really important. There is a place for everybody.
Absolutely right. Thank you. More discussion. You guys are making it easy for me. What I'm thinking, and the members of the committee, please speak up if you think that I'm wrong. I'm thinking that we're going to give the advisory board three months to come up with a recommendation. We'll meet again in June on that matter. And in the meantime, the A-Team is going to do everything they possibly can to get us ready without actually pulling the trigger, so that in June, if we decide we want to go for this, there's no huge lead time before we apply for our CON. Does everybody agree with that? Does somebody have other opinions on that?
Some of those things they do will be a benefit, whether or not we pull the trigger on CON. So I think that's a wise choice, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I absolutely agree with that. Two recommendations I would make is a biweekly, let's say a monthly report from the A-Team on where their progress is, so we know exactly where it's at. And also extend the courtesy to the advisory board, if they'd like to come in and explain any of their findings, or if we had questions, we can, we could sum it up and...
I think that's appropriate. Thank you.
The chairman of the advisory board is here today. Kevin Waters is here from our advisory board.
Yes, he is. Welcome, Kevin.
Just maybe one more question, and it might be not directly on topic, but of the billing that the EMS services do, does, do you know, I have an idea, what they do bill Medicaid, correct?
Yes, they bill Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurance. In the study, it shows a, they did an average in there for that, for the ones that do it. We only have one fire department that is doing it, and they just started within the last month charging. The rest of the fire departments have not come on board. They got the, in the budget two years ago, they could do it, but they have not, none of them have stepped up and done it yet.
Well, the Medicaid portion, obviously, is, do you, any sense of what percentage of the calls that would relate to?
I believe when we looked at, I think it's actually in the study, but I think it was like 58, is that? You guys have a better idea. What is it, about 58? Is that about...
70% of the value.
Okay. Okay. The payer mix, it was in the study.
A lot of it we're paying for twice.
Well.
Since the state doesn't reimburse us for all the, our Medicaid. Okay, thank you.
Unlike Chris's thoughts, do we want to go down the road of doing our own billing at the startup stage of this?
So we have had some internal conversations about this over the past year. And I know it involved Terry right along. I don't believe Terry's going to want to bring this on internally because it's such a big thing. We do already bill for medical through the health department. We already bill these parties, but that would be, that's a much smaller piece than what we would need to do. And I think we're looking at third-party billing. Is that your thoughts, Terry?
Yeah, I think that's the best anyway because I think you want the experts billing. And billing for medical insurance and those type of things takes a lot of training. And I think they have to be experts in how they're coding it so that you get the best reimbursement that you can. So I think you would want to go out to a third-party biller, that that's their job, that's their forte. And, you know, it might be able to help our internal structure as it is because maybe they could do our billing for, because we, excuse me, you know, we do billing through the health department and through our community services program. So both of those have external bills for insurance providers and Medicaid, Medicare. So I think it's something that you should look at as a entire project for third-party medical billing.
Even if we do that, though, we'll still need staff here to act as the liaison on the billing because it's not just a matter of, you know, you code the bill correctly, it goes out, somebody pays it. There is a lot that goes with the responsibilities to, on Medicaid billing. And we would need a good QA person and to make sure we have things in order. And Bonnie, I know, has thought a lot about that as well.
So I assume it'd be easier to absorb those costs and function internally too? Is that?
I think so.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stockton.
Is there any traction anywhere with the whole effort to get the insurance payments coming directly to the providers rather than to the patient?
I think that's been passed.
Yeah, that legislation takes effect in January of '25, that that should be direct pay to the provider, not to the patient.
Okay. Other conversations. This can't be it. We have allocated a whole lot of time. I do have one more thing on the agenda, but.
I would just like to say, this board really has taken on EMS as a whole since you were elected. You have made a lot of progress. I know we had the study back and it seems overwhelming like what the next step forward is. But just the fact that you've cleared responsibilities on EMS coordinator Bonnie, knowing what her responsibilities are, has done a fabulous job in taking that on. You know, you've got your EMS medical director, you have your EMS advisory board stood back up, you've got trainings that you didn't have a while back. You took on this study so that you would have the ability to make an informed decision on how to spend county tax dollars. I really feel like you have done a lot in the past couple of years. And I think there's a lot more to do, but you're well-prepared at this point in time to take the next steps forward.
I think that this committee and this board realize that lives are at stake and this is why we're doing this. So I thank my committee and I thank the board, well done. And we're not done. We're not done. Okay, want to move on to another topic? As you probably know, we had received correspondence from the Wellsville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And if, if you haven't seen it, I'm not, I'm not great at reading things. I'll read it to you if you want me to. But that's not my favorite thing to do, no? Who wants me to read it? Okay, good. Thank you. In short, what it is, they were talking about what they do, how they do it, and their successes. And if there's funding available, they would like to be involved and they would like to have funding in some fashion. And if we, if we and when we start talking about funding for agencies and so forth, we, the legislature is going to have to determine what that's going to look like and how that's going to be distributed. So we're nowhere near there, but I just wanted you to know, as you probably do, that we did receive a request from Wellsville Ambulance Corps, which will be held for now until we figure out what it is we're doing with that particular topic. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that at this time? Yes, Jan?
You know where I'm going with this. First of all, you give to one, you're going to have to give to all, volunteer, whatever. You can't just select one and give them money. Second of all, I don't think that is where we want our county dollars going. We are supporting MTS so that we have a good ambulance service and keeping them going. We don't have the money to start giving out to everybody. And I just think that, I know that they get paid to do what they do, they bill. So again, I think if you give to one, you have to give to all, and I don't see how we possibly can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a slightly different take on that.
Yes, Mr. Shear.
So, you know, MTS is obviously 24/7 providing a service. Wellsville has paid staff around the clock, Monday through Friday, volunteers on weekends. It's not a rinky-dink operation. It's a very professional service and they handle a lot of calls on that side of the county. This isn't like Richburg ambulance asking for money here. It's a total different. So I don't think, I think the qualifications are very easy to draw out and draw the line in the sand. So I respectfully, very much disagree with your opinion, Ms. Burdick.
Thank you.
I'll weigh in on that.
No, go ahead. That's why we're asking.
You know, so I agree with what you said, Steve. We need to figure out, there's many ways to help these volunteer ambulance corps in giving them money. Giving them money, I don't think is just the answer. And I agree, if you do it for one, you've got to do it for all. So I think we need to look at and wait it for our three months to get back here. How do we support our volunteer agencies, as you say? Isn't, how, you know, I mean, there's many ways that we can help them besides just giving them money. So I agree, we need to wait and see what the result is after three months to figure out how and what the needs are for these volunteer agencies.
Thank you. Mr. Healy.
I just have to say that I agree with everyone on this topic and moving forward. I think that we need to help all our volunteers a lot more than we're helping them and have been helping them. And I think, you know, however we do it, we should try and be fair in how we do it too. And it will be part, you know, part of our ongoing conversation is, as we look at, look at this going, moving forward.
Thank you. Something else? All right. We have allocated a great deal of time to this work session this morning and it doesn't break my heart that we're done early, but if you have anything, please. Mr. Harris.
I don't want to do it too early if there's more conversation to be had. So let me know when, when you're ready because we're going to have to kick Bonnie and Jeff and MTS. But we do need an executive session at some point, but let me know when that's best for you.
All right, I think when we run out of things. Madam.
Can I just like summarize for my own self, like what we've talked about? I guess the things that I've heard is that we are going to attempt to do the CON, but give the three months to the board to kind of come up with a specific plan, right? A countywide plan. And as part of that plan, we'll discuss things like mutual aid and how, I guess one of my concerns is, how does that affect outlying areas who might need response from other counties? For instance, Swain possibly or Kansarega. And then from there, but also our A-Team will work on some things to get ready so that in June, we will be able to apply for that CON. Is that about right? Does that summarize it?
That is my desire and hope, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Harris, I believe if we need to do an executive session, this would be a good time. I don't know the topic. What will we say it is?
It's to discuss the employment history of a particular individual, but I don't think I can make that motion. I'm not sure, but maybe another member of the committee.
Okay, that would be. Mr. Healy, in a second. Mr. Barnes, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. We're going to go into executive session.